Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Here.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Here.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
Here.
Approval minutes, July 25th, 2013, special meeting minutes and July 25th, 2013, regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Under Finance, number one, recommend approval of the financial report for the month of July 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item two, recommend approval of accounts payable, payroll and benefits expenditures for July 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item three, recommend approval of transfers, advances and advance returns for the month of July 2013.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item four, recommend approval of continued membership in Ohio Department Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for the October 1st, 2013 through September 30th, 2014 period at a cost of $100, which is the same as the prior year membership.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item five, recommend approval of the fleet insurance renewal with Ohio Casualty Company, Kennedy Insurance Agency for the August 27th, 2013 through August 26th, 2014 period at a cost of $24,526. The prior year coverage cost $24,175. Proposed coverage would continue to include replacement cost coverage for buses 10 years of age or less.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item six, recommend approval in agreement between the Goshen Township Board of Trustees and the West Branch Local School District for the purpose of providing a school resource officer for a two-year period, September 1st, 2013 through August 31st, 2015, at a cost of $10,000 per year payable out of the general fund. And this also the same as last year.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item seven, recommend approval to set aside funds under Senate Bill 345 methodology for capital equipment in the amount of $375,356.94 for fiscal 2013-14.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
No recognitions tonight, WBDA comments, WBCA comments, no visitors comments, no correspondence. Report to the board, Dr. Wendell.
Hey, Bob, John, you have a list to move?
Oh, there was.
Was there a comment?
Here, I'll go with it.
Well, why don't I, I'll do my report real quick while we're taking a look at that. Just two items that I wanted to share with you, both of them some nice good information to start the school year out. Every year, West Branch local schools, for as long as I can remember, participate in something called Ohio Write or Read Week. We do this every May. This past May was the May 12th through the 18th. And to receive Ohio Write or Read Week Celebration Awards, each school or library must participate in a minimum of three of the activities that they list, and there's many, but I'll just let you know a couple of the ones that are out there. And one is daily sustained silent reading, the really nice booket program for Pizza Hut. Students read a certain number of books and then get to eat some pizza. Teen read program in October, daily reading allowed younger students to older students, participation in the Young Authors Writing Conference, and tutoring at a number of different levels. So I'm pleased to tell you that every one of our schools, it's coordinated through our library program here, does participate in that. Our elementary schools, our middle school and our high school. And so I have certificates from the Write or Read Council, and I'll be distributing those, but I wanted to let you know that that had occurred. I also want you to know that just recently, the State of Ohio released a new version of the state report card for each one of the school districts. And I'll give you like a little preview of coming attractions, but in September, Mr. Kitzmiller, who is our middle school principal, but also doubles as our testing coordinator, will be here to go over a lot of information with you on our testing program, elementary through high school. But he is, would also share with you tonight, up until now, for the last, for about a decade, school districts have been rated anywhere from continuous improvement to excellent with distinction. Last year, we were fortunate to be rated as excellent with distinction, and we appreciated that very much. This year, they've got away with those particular categories and have gone to an A, B, C, D, F rating. And I'm very pleased to tell you that in Standards Met, West Branch Met, 23 of the 24 standards, once again had a performance index that exceeded 100. And for the Standards Met for that category, West Branch received an A. So I'm pleased to report that, talk to the teachers and the staff about that at the opening of school, and I can't think of a better way to start school out. So just wanted to share that information with you.
All right, I apologize, we do have a couple people that wish to speak. Again, I think both of you have been here before, you know that you each get five minutes. We're probably not going to, we're not going to respond to your questions or anything until we get all the facts. And so who wants to speak first, Mr. Delo or Mrs. Neely?
Okay, I know you can't answer any questions, but I have three concerns about the tax levy. Would you guys get ready to ask for it? A, in 1968, 33 kids more graduated than they did last year in a school with less than half the staff. But yet you guys want to hire more staff? No call for it. There was more kids in 1968 graduating from West Branch than they did last year with less than half the staff. Two, attorney fees. One, is she getting paid to sit here tonight on our tax dollars? And if so, why is she here? But yet you guys want to ask for more money? Is it deal with Tracy McBarren done yet? No. She keeps postponing it and charging taxpayers more legal fees for no reason. That case should have been done months ago. But yet you guys want more money? The school plays. Where's all that money going? You guys sold out every school play last year. Paying any of the school bills?
No.
All goes to the music department. So taxpayers pay the gas bill in the middle of winter when you do duty in the beast? The doors open and close a thousand times a night, Nicole? Lacter bill, paying extra janitors overtime? Is that fair to us taxpayers? When Sam Rowley makes $10,000 or whatever it is off these plays? You guys start needing to start using your heads if you want money and start showing on the books. And what really upsets me about this attorney sitting here?
Well, we appreciate that, we appreciate this, have a seat. Yes, next.
And see, that's what you always do.
Thanks a lot, thanks a lot. And we have Mrs. Neely, right?
Again, the rehire rehires. There's seven of them on here. And I did a little more research. A teacher coming in, $33,000 is the basic rate. I went back clear to 2007 for Mr. Morphold just now. In 2007, he made $55,988. That's beyond the five years. Granted, you don't pay, you won't pay his medical or anything, but that's still not going to equal what you would pay for a new staff member. Not even close. Okay? And then you're going to do that seven times over.
Can I, can I ask you a question? You brought this up last time.
Yes.
So between now and next meeting, if you could come in and talk to Mr. Tellzro, who's our treasurer, he will give you the numbers of what a rehired teacher it is, and it's not what you just stated.
Well, you said five years. You would go back to the five year. Well, that's beyond the five year. And that's exactly what I went through.
We would be happy to sit down with you and just explain this information, and then if you want to come back and make a comment based on that, that's fine. But I just want to make sure that you have all the right and accurate information before you do that, okay?
I mean, I'm a state employee, so I know.
Well, I don't, I don't think you have the accurate information for us to be able to, you know, to have a real picture. And after you do that, if you want to come back and continue on with this, that's fine.
Okay.
But it's been twice now, and we just want to make sure that we've had an opportunity, we've not had an opportunity to talk with you, and we sit here and are not really able to enter into a dialogue.
Well, maybe afterwards, if you have time.
I cannot do it afterwards. Call me, call me, because we want to spend some time.
See, I have a job, I work days.
I will meet you tonight. Well, I just can't meet you tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fine.
No, I really want you to have the right information, because if you understand that, I think, I think you'll see some wisdom to this, okay? And if not, that's fine. I just want to make sure you've got the right information.
Okay.
That's, that's all.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay. And then I go to the Title I tutors. I tutor for Title I when my kids were in school. I did it for free. Okay. I don't know when the paying for this came in, but I mean, my youngest will be 20. All right, so it's been a little while. But I did this for free.
We have, we have much to talk about, so please come in and do that. I'm simply going to tell you, and I don't usually respond, that's federal money, that's federal government money specifically for that purpose. But please come in and I will explain that to you, because it looks like a lot of people, I understand that. But I want to understand why the federal government gives us that money and how it's allocated. You probably did Ohio Reads, which was a wonderful program. It was a volunteer program.
I did do that at NOS.
Yeah.
But I also did the Title I.
Okay, good. But come in and we'll explain that to you too, but I wouldn't want, that's.
So is there a way to differentiate what is coming from the school and what's coming from federal?
Absolutely.
That way, because I think the taxpayers, myself, would like to see the difference?
I think that's an important point.
I absolutely agree.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. So you come in and we can explain exactly where that is.
Okay.
Because the title money actually has kind of grown in the last couple of years, which is good. It allows us to give some specific intervention to our kids.
And it's part of intern. And don't.
She's right there. Would you like to say hi to her?
Isn't that part of their training?
That money comes to us from the State of Ohio, doesn't cost us a dime, and we get all this wonderful service from this lovely young lady. So we appreciate you bringing that up, because you get a chance to meet her.
Absolutely.
Yeah, she's going to be a great addition to West Branch. Yes, now, if you would just get her some green clothes.
That's.
Other than that, she's perfect.
Got to get you out of your own. See, so now, as you know, nothing is personalized at any, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody.
Well, that's why I'd like to sit down with a United Board meeting and let you roll out all your questions, and we'll stay with you as long as you want to, because it's all pretty complex stuff.
Okay. One more?
I know you can grasp it, I don't mean it that way, but it's just, if we know in advance what you're looking for, we'll pull it out, and then we can, we can have a good discussion.
Well, I didn't have this beforehand, but anywhere that I've ever in my entire life worked, we have never had our facility or agency pay for flowers. Okay? I think that's unnecessary. That has always come out of our own pocket. You know, if you want to get flowers, you know what? Take up a collection. Here you go. They all plant a card. We're sorry, accept our sympathy, whatever, blessings. I think it's unnecessary and a waste. I just have a really good feeling about it. Um, I have one. Oh, no. Um, how we got the A and the excellent rating, I just have to point out that Mrs. McBarren was a big part of that, because she was here teaching at that time. So it obviously didn't, you know, she contributed to that excellent rating.
Will you do that? Will you make sure you call me? Seriously, before the next meeting?
Oh, you betcha.
And we will set up a time to do that. I'm anxious to talk to you.
You betcha, I will. All right.
No old business, new business, item number one, recommend approval for the superintendent to purchase flowers on behalf of the school board for the purpose of granting condolences on an as-needed basis.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item two, recommend approval to compensate Karen Sugart for in lieu of transportation for the 2013-2014 school year at the established IRS mileage rate for round trip mileage from home to school two times daily for days in attendance.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item three, recommend approval to enter into an agreement with the Village of Beloit for ambulance service for the 2013-2014 fall season at the rate of $75 per game.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item four, recommend approval to contract with Dr. Duane Everett, Everett Health Center Incorporated for athletic coverage for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item five, recommend approval to establish school, school fees at $15 for kindergarten to grade four and $20 for grades five through 12 for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item six, recommend approval to establish lunch fees at $2 for kindergarten to grade four and $2.25 for grade five through 12 for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item seven, recommend approval of transportation, 2013-2014, adopt reads and stops, and give authorization to make changes and adjustments as needed in the interest of safety and efficiency.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item eight, recommend approval to accept the following gifts and donations, from Linda Walker to the high school wrestling program, $500. From Kohl's, the Knox Elementary Principal, $500. West Branch Athletic Boosters, West Branch Athletics watering system, $1,100. West Branch Athletic Boosters, West Branch Athletics video editing, $304.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item nine, personnel, under item A, recommend approval to employ Emily Gunning as an intervention specialist for extended school year services during the summer of 2013.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item B, recommend approval to accept the resignation of Sherry Kitzmiller as Director of Special Services effective August 5th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item C, recommend approval to accept the resignation of Alana Nemick as school psychologist effective August 6th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item D, recommend approval to accept the resignation of Mickey McDorman as a school nurse effective August 15th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item E, recommend approval to accept the resignation of Sherry Smith as an educational aide effective August 16th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item F, recommend approval to accept the resignation of Mary Jo Ferguson as an intervention specialist effective August 19th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item G, recommend approval to accept the resignation of Elizabeth Hall as Special Services Secretary effective August 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item H, recommend approval to accept the resignation of Bonnie McClellan as a freshman cheerleading advisor for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item I, recommend approval to accept the resignation of Stephanie Cope as a transportation aide effective August 21st, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item J, recommend rehiring Tara Roma as a high school teacher for the 2013-2014 and 2014-2015 school years per the negotiated agreement with the staff.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item K, recommend rehiring Linda Imhoff as an elementary teacher for the 2013-14, 2014 and 2014-2015 school year per the negotiated agreement with the staff.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item L, recommend rehiring Dale Morphold as a middle school teacher for the 2013-2014 and 2014-2015 school years per the negotiated agreement with the staff.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item M, recommend rehiring Jane Morphold as a middle school teacher for the 2013-2014 and 2014-2015 school years per the negotiated agreement with the staff.
So moved.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item N, recommend rehiring Nancy Winery as a family consumer science teacher for the 2013-2014 and 2014-2015 school years per the negotiated agreement with the staff.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item O, recommend rehiring Miranda Zadigian as an elementary teacher for the 2013-2014 and 2014-2015 school years per the negotiated agreement with the staff.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item P, recommend rehiring Robert Offenbecker as a physical education teacher for the 2013-2014 and 2014-2015 school years per the negotiated agreement with the staff.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item Q, recommend rehiring Louis Sellaroli as an intervention specialist for the 2013-2014 and 2014-2015 school years per the negotiated agreement with the staff.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item R, recommend rehiring Joseph Genaki as a middle school teacher for the 2013-2014 and 2014-2015 school years per the negotiated agreement with the staff.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item S, recommend approval to employ Heather McMasters as an intervention specialist for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item T, recommend approval to employ Kathleen Solene as a professional development coordinator for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item U, recommend approval to employ Alana Nemick as a interim director of special services for the 2013-2014 school year effective August 6th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item V, recommend approval to employ Elizabeth Hall as a school nurse for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item W, recommend approval to employ Karen Elsner as special services consultant on an as-needed basis at the rate of $18.75 per hour.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item X, recommend approval to employ Kristen Bartolata as a speech language pathologist for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Item Y, recommend approval to employ Jennifer Anderson as an elementary teacher intervention specialist for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Item Z, recommend approval to employ Allison Creppfield as a psychologist intern for the 2013-2014 school year through a State of Ohio School Psychology Intern Grant.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Wallace? Welcome.
We're very glad to have you here, and not to put you on the spot, but we'll do that. If you wouldn't mind just telling us briefly about the intern program, because I believe she's the first intern that we've had, psychology, a psychology intern. And sort of a little bit of how that works, it just, just basically, we're just.
Well, I have my master's in school psychology already. We get that in our first year of our program, and I'm working on my specialist degree now. And this is the last requirement for me to be a licensed school psychologist, so I'll just have a couple of supervision hours. But for the most part, once I get my feet on the ground, I'll be kind of on my own at the elementary schools, and then fulfilling some requirements at the high school and the middle school.
And you'll be working with Mrs. Nemick?
Yes. I'll be working under Mrs. Nemick's supervision and then with Mrs. Shemelke as well.
And school psychologists are required to have a year-long internship, which is quite a commitment, so we are, and as we talked a little bit earlier, at least there is some funding for this, and it does come to us from the state, and we are happy to receive that and very happy to bring you on board. So, thanks for coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item double A, recommend approval to employ Patricia Jarvis as an aide for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Or Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Recommend approval to employ Monica Palmer as an aide for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Or Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Recommend approval to employ Danielle Kinsey as a three-year, three-hour, three-year, three-hour playground aide for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Recommend approval to employ Tracy Courtney as a two and a half hour playground aide for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Recommend approval to employ Lori Bush as a Title I tutor for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Recommend approval to employ Diana Wallace as a Title I tutor for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Recommend approval to employ Jeffrey Rhodes as a Title I tutor for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Recommend approval to employ Breonna Kelikawa as a Title I tutor for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Recommend approval to employ Alexis Schmidt as a Title I tutor for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved.
Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Carnegie?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Recommend approval to employ Betty George as a Title I tutor for the 2013-2014 school year pending certification.
So moved.